I don't know what was discussed here. So.
Thank you.
How are you, sir? Ready when you are.
Council Bragton.
Okay.
Like you call this regular town council meeting to order if I get a roll call, please.
Chair Lee.
Here.
Council Madore.
Here.
Council Danfor. Here. Council Madore.
Here.
Council McKeown.
Yeah.
Council Appella here.
Here.
Council Prey.
Here.
Thank you. If I could have you all join us in the pleasure of allegiance, please. Thank you. And adjustments to the agenda, there's an addition, six, seven, twenty, twenty-two minutes and order of one thirty-two dash twenty, twenty-two. Seeking approval of the minutes of the May twenty-sixth, twenty, twenty-two regular meeting and June seventh, twenty, twenty-two executive session. Don't move. Motion by Council Madore, seconded by Council Appella, here, all of them, dear. That's a seven, zero.
If I may make a public comment.
Please.
I did make a correction in those minutes for the correct warrant committee. I had made a mistake.
Thank you for noting that.
This person.
Thank you for noting that, Diana. And with that, that brings us to the Millinocket Heritage Plaza update for our special presentation. I know we have some members here in person and also on Zoom representing the plaza, but Eric, I will hand it off to you. For those in the public who do not know what the Millinocket Heritage Plaza is, it is the empty lot at the corner of Central Freedom and Penobscot Avenue that we have been discussing for the past number of years, how to revitalize that site for the benefit of the town. Eric, I'll hand this off to you. You want to give us updates on that project?
Thank you, everyone, for the welcome and for having us tonight to give some information about where the plaza is at. As many of you know, the KTP has been around for a while, and in October, after an eight-month delay, at the IRS, received our five oh one C three certification. So it was really nice to come out of that delay of that certification. And since October, we've worked up to a great place for the plaza, and I'm hoping Eldon Duty is present in the gallery there today. I didn't quite hear you, but I'll kick it over to Eldon to give an overview, and then we'll be here for any questions that you might have.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Yeah. Yeah, our our goal is to make it so that it's not an empty lot. So for a lot of you, this started in two thousand seventeen. I remember going to all the meetings and seeing the great looking renderings and then finding out there wasn't any funding. So after some regrouping, there's now a very active Millinocket Heritage Plaza work group that the group is meeting again tomorrow. And some of the people on the council will be on that meeting and are certainly welcome to, and I expect some will be. But just a brief overview of what we've been doing the last few weeks. We have broken the project down into digestible steps and not trying to look at one big endeavor. And so we're calling it phases. And phase one was done, done in two thousand seventeen, and it developed all the renderings that have been around the community for years now and came up with the conceptual designs. What we have now and what I have here with me, it's not quite ready for issuing, but it will be by this time next week, is a request for proposals for a consultant. And we're going to go up to five consultants, hoping there's at least three who are interested, but it will be for phase two. And phase two will be to take the additional rendering that you've all seen. And what's been taking place over the last few months is getting a lot of involvement and input. And so get a consultant on board and take the input that we have received to date as well as have the consultant come and work with us on a series of meetings with public at large, with the council, with KTP, with the Heritage Plaza work group. And refine all of that into drawings that would be basically the final design. Not detailed design, but the final concept refined processment and schedule. So that then funding can be obtained for something that's real. Having the five oh one designation is extremely helpful and other community activities and and so forth. And so at the end of this phase two, phase three would be then to create construction drawings, specifications, contracts, and so forth, to be able to go out for bids for construction. And phase four would be construction, so more manageable steps. We have the draft of the request of proposals written. It's gone through many transitions in recent weeks, including today. It is about ready to go to the KTP board for their review for the first time. There's also an extensive document, and it'll be up on my short discussion for us meeting too, which is elements for design. A lot of you have been involved in developing those elements for design. And I'm not going to go over all of them, but there's a lengthy list of making this lot a gateway for information. People coming to with the EOS and signs and so forth, describing the whole area and what's available in the area. So in a limited space, make it a gateway for the area, also make it a gateway for one of the stocks and the national peanut highways and byways now have the designation for. In keeping with that theme, make it a hub for recreation, so someone driving into town, things like where's the what does the summer go hub have for services and so forth. So make it an information hub for recreation. Really focus on passages so that that's the first thing people see as part of Penobscot Avenue, section street and behind here, so that it's it's an eye-catching area. Have a small playground area, even younger people involved. A lot of interpretive illustrations, a pavilion of some type. Think that's important. Ample tables, seating, benches in amongst greenery. Make it the infrastructure for events. So that compliments like Royal Thieves last week. Make it an artistic area, again, eye-catching. Build on what's happening already, bike shop. Seasonal uses, the brainstorming ideas like farmer's markets. Maybe even a little ice skating rink that people can see and be directed to a bigger one, cornhole, bocce ball, you name it. The RFP for engineering really focuses also on on parking and infrastructure. We need to make sure that parking is handled right around the drainage, which has been issued from the site, is handled, sewer, water, power, so forth. And public restrooms, where should they be? And how should they be maintained? And then bottom one that I'm asking the consultant to help us with is on funding. What's an organized way, a little logistical way to do the funding? These steps have to be paid for step by step, which is why we have it now for into the steps or for the phases. So we're in the process again. Oh, and we have developed a selection criteria for the consultant. Where very high rating will be given to their experience with community and nonprofit organization, developing outdoor spaces. Their experience with design, the design of creative use of small spaces and their availability and so forth. So we have the consultant selection criteria. This will be in this package, so the consultants know how they're going to be graded. And so we want them to focus on creativity and prove to us in what I do. Then we're hoping to have these so that they're not just a map by this time next week, and then once we have the appropriate reviews, get this out on the street. Question?
Well, thank you very much, Eldon and Eric, as well, for both being present for this. Obviously, this is an important piece of real estate in the town at the corner of our downtown. And Eldon, yet again, another community project that you volunteered your time for. So just thank you very much for all the efforts that you put into this. I know Council Prey and I have been to many, if not all, of these meetings. From my perspective, I've seen a lot of outreach to neighboring businesses and to the community to make sure that as many people as possible have had an ability to provide their feedback for this. So I just want to say thank you for that. With that, I just want to open it up to the council first, if there's any comments or questions. Council Madore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ellen, we went through back in two thousand seventeen, a lot of meetings and a lot of back and forth with the design for the plaza until we had an actual working design that was what seemed to be agreed upon at the time as a good working space for the community and that area. Are those designs going to be that that initial work that was done and the consults that were brought in and everything else of that? That's all going to be scrapped and started again?
No, no, not at all. In fact, these are all the original renderings that you've seen many times. And they are part of the request proposal. They're built right into it. And what the I think it was very well said when he said that the community outreach was going on. There were a group of us that had gathered in the downstairs of the library many times on this, but there wasn't the community outreach that is taking place now. Making sure a body of property owners are involved. In fact, one or more are on these calls that we have now in meetings. And so and and there wasn't a good review of this was more artistic. It wasn't a good review of things like water and sewer and parking and access done at this time. In fact, it basically wasn't. And so what this is, we're going to ask an engineer or art landscape architect or a type of firm this to take this, don't scrap, take this that was agreed to by a committee, and now let's redefine it, define it into an actual project with an affirmed scope of work and firm process that we can go and use for funding. So it's to build on these and put in all those aspects that weren't considered initially, they didn't get to that phase.
The you've mentioned more than once about parking. Are you talking about taking part of the space and use it for parking as such? Or are you talking about looking at a redesign of the parking around the space that is part of the town, the Penobscot Avenue?
Well, for example, answer that, in these original renderings, there were some suggestions of maybe changing the parking right here on Penobscot Avenue next to that space to accommodate vendors sold when there were farmer's markets and so forth. How would, how would that impact traffic if that was looked at and then worked with the town and is, is it feasible to reconfigure some parking spaces? Because that would have had to be done in these to do what's shown in the initial renderings. So again, that's a level of detail that conceptually would look at before, but it wasn't looked at seriously in working with Public Works Crew and and the council and so forth and so forth. How would we accommodate vendor stalls if someone pulls up with a farm like those types of parking?
As you're old and Eric, did you have something to add to that?
I was just going to say, the project that we're developing formally ends kind of where the edge of the grass ends and the sidewalk begins. So that's what we're raising money to develop. That being said, we're trying to attend meetings and integrate planning as closely as possible with every other planning aspect going on in town. And if we are awarded significant monies through the DOT, I'm certain that they'll have some good advice on that that integration. So I just wanted to be clear that we're focused on developing the plaza itself from the sidewalk in, but obviously, it's extremely important. We want to make sure that we're open to all inputs and ongoing projects to have a good integration of the borderline, especially around infrastructure, pedestrian safety and access and and all those aspects with downtown redevelopment.
Thank you, Eric. Any other council question or comment, Council McKeown?
Thank you. Just wanted to say, thank you, Ellen, and to all those involved. Another one of those cases, some of the people are on the same tables, but look what can happen out of that. And I know initially, when this project was brought to us, one of the main focuses was connecting those two spaces, that there's more of our and another green space, really encompassing the downtown. I know that's a part of a lot of action plans and kind of the vision that we're looking for. And hearing the finer details of what's actually going on now is very encouraging because we already have stuff going down on one end, and to see this taking the next leap, it's it's nice. So thank you very much.
Yeah. And as is, when I listed a few of the bullet points, that is actually the first item, make it the downtown gateway.
Thank you, Council McKeown. Council Danfor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, Eldon. What you presented to us tonight was very comprehensive. It really laid out where you've been and what you hope to your next steps. You mentioned the RFP that's going out. So it sounds like it appears to be you have funding for that proposal to pay for whoever you would contract for phase two, but then need to go after the funding to make that a reality. So funding is already set for phase two?
I'm going to pass the buck to Eric in just a moment, but one of the reasons for breaking you into the phases was to have fundable actions. And yes, we believe with phase two being to take this original work and Council Madore and I will vote in those original meetings and refine this. So yes, we think the funding has been identified that will take this to the next level where we have a good term written scope of work and process.
I'll just reiterate what Eldon's saying. We so that the process that Eldon is outlining for the KTP, we have the first phase of that, the money set aside for that, thankful to the SUEL grant, as many of us have received, KTP did as well. And one specific line item in there was bridge funding to open up this design. So once we were awarded that SUEL grant, this team got together and got it got working, and Eldon has really led the way on the on the RFP. When we believe also we're going to be able to allocate some other monies we already have on hand, and we're working through the committee and board processes to do that. But what this will do, issuing the RFP, will allow us to hit the go button on the next round of funding applications we've already got lined up to fund that remainder of the design to get us through the blueprints. And that, when we get to the blueprints, that'll be the heavy RFP lift. That'll be the several hundred thousand dollar project, whereas this is going to be in the tens of thousands dollars to get to the the final design. We'll see what that final cost is.
Thank you, Ellen. Eric. Any other council comment or question?
No, I guess I just want to follow up and say thank you. That makes good sense. And SUEL delegation has been very good with the country. So I appreciate that funding and the work. And I know work on an RFP, writing something like that, developing it is a huge amount of work. So thank you so much again, Ellen.
Thank you, Council Danfor. Any other question or comment from the council? And seeing none, any commoner question from the public? Jackson, name and address at the podium, please.
Andy Jackson, one on the Sixth Knock Street, Millinocket, Maine. So I know there are concerns about the parking. And to that end, one of the purposes of buying two fifteen Penobscot Avenue and acquiring the the lot behind it was to protect the park. And we are actually full disclosure, I'm also on the Board of Directors for the Heritage Plaza. I'm going to donate that parcel of land behind two fifteen and give it to the park. And what they do with it is is their their concern, and we'll discuss that. But that may be some alleviation of parking. I think it could be cars.
Thank you, Council Jackson, or Mr. Jackson. Any other public comment? And seeing none, thank you both again for coming here and presenting for us and all your work up until now.
Thank you for your patience. I think probably you and I have been the most impatient here for two thousand seventeen.
Thank you for staying before.
If we could just pose one question to the council before we went, is that okay?
Please.
And we would love to include a bathroom in the planning. If we do a bathroom, however, that's open to the public, of course, we'd want to do a diligent bathroom that was done well and that was easily maintainable and accessible. The price that the DOT puts on those is roughly three hundred thousand dollars. We definitely want to include it. Our efforts in fundraising would be bolstered and the outlook would be bolstered if we could partner with the town to say that we want to see it there and that we can work with the town to maintain it in the long term. That would help us write it into grants and add that on to the development for the the project. And whatever we can do from the KTP side to help you guys consider that or put information in front of you, please let us know.
Thank you, Eric. I know we did discuss that as a council probably a couple of months back, but just to clarify. So you're suggesting that you will raise the funds for the build of the bathroom and that the town will maintain it from that point forward after it's built?
Roughly, but we could decide whatever we wanted in any agreement that was forthcoming. It may be that the KTP does end up after its capacity building, have some level of capacity or funding and just need some assistance from the town, but maybe that it's better for the town to just maintain it. Whatever we agree on, but just to have that teamwork in place because it's so central to the town as well.
Eric, does any council have any comment on that? Council Madore?
While I'm not opposed to working with, obviously with the group and and I I am a proponent for outdoor public restrooms in the downtown area for when we have trades and things. What I would say probably for any type of committal would be an acknowledgement of what the design is going to be understanding that if the town was to take up the position of maintaining the bathroom or cleaning or whatever, that it be the what type of bathrooms, public bathrooms they are and how they're going to be moved and contained. Council Prey brought up something the other meeting about the design of public bathrooms that are easily, and to your words, hoed down to clean. So I would think that the design of the bathroom and how it would be to make the the ability to take care of it as easy as possible would be something that would be have the town would have to know to consider taking it over. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Council Madore. Eldon?
Yeah. Follow up to that. Part of the request or proposal is that the the engineers come and meet with the MHP team, but also with the town to talk about those types of bathroom designs and and the maintainability. And and the maintainability. And very importantly, and I didn't mention it in the list of things that we're focusing on. But it's a huge one when you're talking bathroom. We also want the design to accommodate very good security. Coverage. So. Security and monitoring and bathroom design and bathroom location. As a whole, specific package of the scope that will be looked at.
When you talk about this and you talk about having bathroom, are you talking about a four season? Bathroom design or is this going to be something that is just going to be a seasonal situation in the warmer climate months?
Four season.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comment? Councilor Peltier?
It's us pulling up on Eric. Councilor Mador's concern. Like if it's awful, it's super memorable. sharing.
Eric, I think generally the the council is open, if I don't have any opposition to hearing what the plans might be. I think it. It would be helpful to have more of a specific idea of what you're asking. And Eldon as well in terms of. What participation you'd like from the town. If you're looking for ongoing one hundred percent maintenance, I mean, that's. More of a complicated issue in terms of staffing and how many hours that would have to be monitored. If there is security, what you know, what level of security we would have to look at as a town participating in. Do you have any more firm of the suggestion unless any other counter has any other comment on that? I would suggest maybe just a more firm. Request more specific would be helpful.
Absolutely. And I could send you guys one that has more detail, but in general, it'd be two phases. The first phase is development. So we wouldn't want to do anything if you guys did want to partner on that part specifically, we wouldn't want to design anything without you. Until the first phase would be development and we wouldn't approve anything unless our partners approved it and you would be a partner on that if you wanted to be. And then the second phase would be once we reach that design. Figuring out how to maintain it in the long term. So we could partner on it in that sort of development phase or, you know. We could simply simply sign a more basic letter saying that once it's installed, the town will partner with us in some form or fashion to be determined later. Whatever that you guys or the town council would advise for the limits on that, we could go any way we want it, but. What we're using a lot of is beginning partnership agreements, saying that the partnership lays out there is more to be defined. But we are going to work together to define those things as we develop them because we don't want to develop anything without all the input.
Thank you, Eric. Would the council generally be fine with participating at least in the development phase of this project? Yep, I think we're we're comfortable with that, Eric. So partnering at least in the development phase so we can. Collaboratively come up with a plan for how that bathroom would look is the next step here.
That's wonderful. And then by the end of that, we'll know if it's even feasible. Maybe it's not even going to be feasible for some sort of engineering issue we don't even see yet. So that's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Alvin. And with that, that moves us to the presentation of the school budget. Unfortunately, just a few hours ago, we got noticed that the superintendent Josh McNaughton. Has chosen to not come today. He had cited that he would like to hold another budget workshop. With the school board on Tuesday. Despite the school board already passing the school board budget previously. I know that there are many, or some in the chambers here today or online who are expecting to participate in that discussion or at least here. The presentation and potentially make a comment on that. And I know that some of you had also adjusted your schedules, even paid for sitters so that you can be here today. So I apologize to those of you who had to have to change your schedule and and show up and not have a presentation. But with that, I still think it's worthy of discussion if any council has any comment. On where we're at and for the public potentially to have any comment as well. The public is already given the. The school board budget that was passed, as has the council. So considering it's on the agenda, I don't think it makes sense to take it off the agenda. Does any council have any comment on the presentation? Councilor McEwen?
Could ever replace the battery sooner. I would just like to go over this with the superintendent when he's available in the present as per usual the forum. Thank you.
Councilor McEwen, any other council comment? Councilor Mador?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would hope that if we have an opportunity to involve the school budget with superintendent. That the budget that is presented is. I I personally, like I say, I've been at this a long time. I've never seen a budget come through in this format. And it does not follow the charter. And it is not in in my opinion. It it's not the type of documentation or the budget for the school that I would like to see. I don't think it actually, like I say, I don't think it fits the charter. I would hope that if you do have an opportunity in the future. That the superintendent comes out with the budget in the format necessary with the appropriate. Line items to be able to give a strong and. Thank you. Give a strong and accurate accounting of the budget for the school coming forward. I I don't find that in this this budget that we receive and. I think. Given a little at the time, perhaps. You can find a way to get this in a format that fits the charter. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Mador. Any other council comment? Seeing none, any comment from the public?
Sandra? Thank you, Sandra Sullivan, one of course, in that God. Seeing that the budget is not going to be be for today. When will the council get this budget?
So the council has received the budget that was already approved by the school board. And that's what we were seeking to have a presentation on tonight. So we have already received that budget. We need to hold a special hearing, at least one special hearing of the school budgets, we either approve or not approve that budget. That is scheduled for our next council meeting.
And so am I understanding correctly then that the meeting he is going to have with the school board members? If he's not going to be able to make any changes to this budget that he's already given you?
The only area in which he cited, he being the superintendent, cited that there would be a discussion. On Tuesday of a budget workshop with the school board. Is a further discussion into the international program. My understanding, nothing else about the budget has changed.
My concern is. I bought the meeting. And I feel personally that it was kind of ran through without. With a lot of unanswered questions and I'm concerned that if he holds off long enough. They the town council will be put in the same position. Am I correct or? Will you still have time to be able to analyze the budget correctly?
I appreciate your concerns. Councilor Pre had a response and I happily answer that as well.
Two things. First of all. I see the chair of the school board is on listening if he would like to add to answer your question. The school board has reviewed the budget, is my understanding. Your interpretation of how that went, I I didn't see it, so I can't comment on that, but I. Understanding that it was a three to two vote to approve the budget. And it was being presented to us in reference to us having time. We're we'll take the time necessary. To do our fiscal responsibilities on the school budget, on the town budget, whatever it is. Just so everybody understands that if no budget is adopted. By the end of the month, they operate on the previous year's budget going forward until the budget is passed. It isn't like they go unfunded thereafter. They're just restricted to the previous year's number.
I'm not really worried about them going on Friday. What I'm worried about is that July first may come. And the town council will say, we have the budget in place, so we're going to cap this. Without giving us the time to analyze.
My point is, we can take as much time as necessary because July first come, they operate on the previous year's budget going forward. Until they rule by can pass.
Thank you, Sandra, for your comment. I know that the council and others have questions about the. Budget, which is. Part of what highlights the importance of the presentation today is so that. Some questions might be answered before we have that hearing. As Council Pre pointed out, we can, as a council, take our time to analyze the budget. To come to our own conclusion on our own time to approve it. We do not have a certain date that we have to abide by. Thank you for your comment. Councilor Peltier, did you have a response?
The difference of constantly doing this such that you're not creating presentations. I only have one point to make regarding the budget that was the best. And that is, the bottom line means net revenue over expenses in two thousand two oh five. That's something that needs to be balanced out. Revenue matching.
Thank you, Councilor Peltier. And that's one of the many questions I'm sure the council has for the superintendent of the school. Warren, you are the chair of the school board and you are on, as Council Pre noted, did you have any comment? You are muted currently.
No, I do not, but thank you for asking.
Thank you, Warren. Councilor Mador?
Yeah, I just. Just to go back to Sandra's question. In previous in previous years, the town council has gone and. Not approved or passed a a school budget. Even to the month of August. And it's never been anything that has been. A problem to take the time. And so there's precedent. On more than one occasion where the council has gone into late August. Before a budget has actually been approved by the town. So we have time and as Council Pre stated. The school would operate on the previous year's budget until such time has passed. So. We we're in no no great hurry to go ahead and do this until obviously questions have been answered and. Things can be worked out to for the benefit of all.
Thank you, Councilor Mador. Thank you for your question, Sandra. Any other comments from the public? And seeing none, I would just like to reiterate the fact that I know from my own experience with the council, it's a very open group of people. That are more than willing to discuss any topic, no matter how controversial. For the sake of coming to a resolution. And to coming to a good relationship between the council and the school. So I would hope that those same. Those same types of feelings applied on the school side. We certainly invite the superintendent anytime. To discuss the school budget or any other school matter that might pertain to any kind of council or town level issue. And I believe that the council will be very open to discussing that and. With that, seeing no other public comment, we'll move on to the town manager's report. Mr. Manager? I will hand it over to you.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me all right? Try that again. Good evening. Can everybody hear me all right?
We can hear you. You can't hear us apparently.
No, I can I can hear you, but I didn't I didn't get I didn't hear a response. That's okay.
You got one. We can hear you just fine.
Fantastic. You'll notice that my video is on one account and my audio is on another. That is the fun of. The broadband situation in the state of Maine and the hotel that I am staying in this evening. So I hope that we all pay very close attention to the infrastructure funds that'll be, you know, implemented very soon and take. Very good advantage of the upcoming broadband infrastructure that'll be laid in the town of Millenock in the next year. So diving into my report. So at the at the previous town council meeting, I had made mention of creating a survey. Regarding the local ARPA funds that we would present. To the community members at the upcoming. Preliminary election on July fourth, July, July, June fourteenth. Wow. It is June fourteenth. And so together with the community initiatives director, we did create that survey. I am going to screen share it so that everybody can see it at this point. So you'll see that this is the current state of that survey. We will have it in physical printed form at the polls on the fourteenth. I will be there as much of that day as possible to. Have some discussions with community members, kind of gauge their input and encourage their participation in this. In this survey. You'll see going through here that it goes over the major sections of allowable spending categories for the local ARPA funds. And then broken down into some examples of what we could do with it to gauge the input. From the community members, their responses will be gauged from not very important to very important. You'll see that. You know, under lost public sector revenue, you know, missed opportunities to fix roads or sidewalks. Playground improvements. You know, when you look at public health, there is, you know, fire department listed. COVID nineteen mitigation and prevention in the future. You know, when you look at more of the infrastructure items on here, talks about culvert replacement. Broadband opportunities. Water systems. And then again. You know, very important topic and a very popular use of some of these monies in other communities around the state is. Special pay for municipal employees who remained working and some with a focus on. Fire and EMS employees who were face to face with much of the most harsh. Conditions throughout the COVID pandemic. And then at the bottom of this survey, you'll notice there's. You know, some some space for some open comments and feedback. So we. Will have that at the polls on the fourteenth. Currently, it is only in this printed physical form. However, very soon, once we launch our constant contact account, we will be able to make a digital version of that to be shared via. Email, social media, our website, engage responses that way as well. So that's local ARPA funds. Now we're going to talk about the Penobscot County ARPA Fund pot of money. We have a deadline approaching on applications to that pot of funding. And in comparison, we know that, you know, our local pot of funds is roughly $200,000 two years in a row, so a total of just over $400,000. And comparably speaking, that is significantly less than the $29 million that Penobscot County has awarded to disperse for, for these reasons, you know, throughout the municipalities and organizations in their region. So tonight, we're looking for some feedback on some of the top priorities we've seen within the municipality that we're looking to submit an application for. I've included two on here. And then since this report was submitted, we added another option that I'd like to talk about. First is sidewalks. The, probably the, the most often received request for action in our community is regarding roads and sidewalks. So we had a discussion, myself, the Community Initiatives Director and our Public Works Director, and came up with, you know, upwards of $500,000 that it would cost to fix the entirety of that list of sidewalks, you know, and that, that could be pared down to, you know, more heavily trafficked or, you know, length of time of neglect since it was repaired, you know, in the past. So that is one option that we would consider applying for. The other option that we have on here is a new farm tractor for the airport that would include, include a bush hog mower attachment. We understand that the equipment that had been used up until recently to do that job is housed at Public Works and is in a state of disrepair. And repair is unlikely from what I understand, given the, you know, availability of parts and cost and, you know, other factors. And in comparison on time of the work, I understand that that piece of equipment cuts a six inch path. It, when you overlap that, it becomes a five inch path, a five foot path, sorry. And the amount of area that that machine mows and the speed of that vehicle makes that job at the airport take approximately three weeks to mow one time. With a realistically sized piece of equipment and a bush hog mower, given the speed and the size of the path, that job can be decreased down to one week and be much more efficient and effective. That is at the lower range, that is between $25,000 and $50,000. The quote we received recently was $53,000. So that is an option that we could look for in either the county funds or the local funds. Now, the third option I wanted to present to gauge feedback on was small business micro grants. We understand that it is being done in other communities and, you know, most of the groundwork has been very well thought out through other downtown communities that we're connected to with the Maine Development Foundation. So the idea is that we would apply for the $25,000 option with the Penobscot County Funds that would likely be, you know, have more potential to be awarded and has significantly less reporting involved on the, on the other end of it. The idea would be to accept applications for grants between 500 and 2,000, maybe $2,500 for local small businesses in Millenocket. And they could use that funding for, you know, to have a website built or to do some marketing or branding, buy equipment, you know, help contribute to a facelift of a downtown business, you know, et cetera. That's a very viable option. And again, any, either of the options of the micro grants or the farm tractor could be, you know, local or county, but we would love some feedback on that. Today, I attended the new managers conference with Maine Municipal Association. It was very rewarding. Definitely helped me understand the field better. It connected me with other town managers, both new and longstanding. So it was a great networking opportunity. We were able to do pretty deep dive into personnel management. We spent quite a bit of time on code of ethics. Talked about legal framework, the Health Trust Fund that, that Maine Municipal handles for all of our health insurance and, and other things. And we learned a lot about the Communications and Legislation Advocacy Group within NMA that, you know, works to advocate for, you know, legislation for, for municipalities and what is affecting them the most, as well as their growing educational services, which are great opportunities for, you know, municipal employees to learn and build competence and be more effective in their positions. After experiencing, this was my first Maine Municipal Association Conference today. And after experiencing the quality that's there, I will likely be recommending an increase on the training budget when we go into our budget meetings coming up so that we can make sure that our employees are having the best opportunities they can to get trained to the best of their abilities. Speaking of the municipal budget, the public hearings for that are scheduled the 16th and the 23rd of this month. And with the, with seeking a vote of adoption of that budget on the 23rd, that is when we expect to seek the vote of adoption for the Millenocket School Department budget as well. I, when I was with Eastern Maine Development Corporation as the Economic Development Director, I had been invited to participate on the Four Main Communities Committee. Now, the Four Main effort, actually, Four Main stands for Forest Opportunity Roadmap Maine. And it, it, it was a pot of funding dispersed to assist the former mill towns that were kind of hurting the most. And over the past few years, you know, our town has, has benefited from that group and that funding substantially. So that community, that committee is getting back together. I am planning to continue to participate as the Town Manager of Millenocket. Our first meeting is coming up the end of this month on the 24th. And that is down in Madison at the GoLab Timber HP Facility. It'll be my second visit there, my first with this group. But it, it's comprised of community leaders, financial leaders, economic development professionals, legal staff from, from all over the state, you know, including Peggy Dagle is also involved, you know, representing East Millenocket, myself, and actually our former Economic Development Director, Mike Elliott, as well. So we'll be, we'll be there on the 24th. I'm happy to represent the town of Millenocket in that committee and see where we can further help our communities that are all experiencing these same things. For example, of what the Four Main effort has done for our, our town, most recently, the housing study that was developed by the Vercell Group in partnership with, you know, our Kattan kind of facilitated that as well. So that, that helped us understand our barriers to housing and our opportunities and laid out kind of some options for us to look at, to tackle the, the housing crisis here locally. I use the crisis term loosely there. Moving on. This next section is called press. Don't believe everything you read. There was recently an article printed in the local paper stating that the town of Millenocket had engaged in legal counsel regarding the international program housed at Strunts High School in Millenocket. That is false. We have not seeked, we have not had any legal counsel regarding that program, nor do we wish to or have any interest in doing so. Now, the, the reporter for that article had been receiving some flack throughout social media as, as that article was passed around. I just wanted to also clarify that that reporter was stating information that was actually spoken in a public meeting. So he, you know, certainly was not making things up. However, what was said in that meeting was very untrue. We are very close to going live with our constant contact account and that is extremely exciting to me. I see this as a huge potential to increase community engagement. That should be live and we should be sending out our first, you know, updates or newsletter within the next two weeks. That, and soon after, we'll be able to send text message notifications similar to what the school does with, you know, snow days and whatnot. We'll be able to send updates via email and, and text message to identify, you know, public meetings, give, you know, opportunities for feedback, invite people to council meetings, even remind them that the property taxes are due. So that is very exciting and we should have that up and running very, very soon. In the way of communication, I wanted to highlight myself and the Community Initiatives Director have been working pretty closely with Mallory at Design Lab on going through all the kind of updated information that is on our website. So we have been doing a deep dive into each of the pages, finding broken links, updating, you know, information that, that wasn't relevant, also deleting information that wasn't relevant. And, you know, one of the more commonly asked for things on that website is a community calendar. And I have spoken about it several times and I actually, during my conference today, was informed that that is live. So what I'm going to do is pull that up and show you all this great new community calendar on our website. So if you go to, you know, millenocket.org, website for the town of Millenocket, scroll down halfway through, we now have this meeting's calendar here. So if we click on that meeting's calendar, it takes us there. It has everything very well arranged. And when you hover over each item on that calendar, it tells you, you know, you know, the time and the Zoom link and, you know, gives you a link to where you can get the agenda and meeting packet. So we'll, we'll continue to work on populating this calendar. And then what, what that does is free up this space down here where a majority of that information has been being housed. So we will actually be able to use this news and events center on the front page of our website to address exactly that, the more larger scale celebratory events and, and major announcements and things, keeping all of the committee meetings and council meetings, community events, et cetera, housed right here on the meeting calendar as well. One more addition to, one more addition I wanted to make to my report this evening above and beyond what was submitted was that over this past weekend, the National, let me make sure I get the name right. The National Fire Protection Agency held their 2022 Annual Conference. And at that conference in Boston, this national organization, our very own Fire Chief Tom Malcolm received a lifetime achievement award and that is an incredible feat. We are very, very proud of Chief Malcolm and his accomplishments here in town of Millenocket. He's served our town. You know, the majority of his adult life and has done incredible things. So that is a very, very much deserving award. Thank you, Tom, for everything you do for our community and congratulations on your award. That concludes my report this evening. Happy to take any questions, answer any, answer any comments. Answer any questions, take any comments. Let's do it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager and Chief Malcolm. How uncomfortable did that just make you? But thank you. I, I hope that recognition is appreciated and we certainly appreciate you. Just before I go to the council, I do want to, want to reiterate this as the council chair, that everything the manager has said regarding the issue of the international program, what he said is completely true. The council has never once asked for or engaged with legal counsel regarding the international program at the school. Any statement that says otherwise is clearly false. We have never questioned the legality of that program. All we ask for is for an open line of communication so that we can ensure that everything that we do and that we approve is understood and has merit and value on behalf of the town. And that's all that we look for. So thank you, Mr. Manager, for clarifying that. Any comments from the council and the manager's board? Council Peltier?
Regarding ARPA funding, particularly the flies with the contract before we get to it. Sidewalks, attention to the adventure, the infrastructure, the capital reserve. Small business grants, some kind of if and on that application. I've been part of the past year and the last, very end, the last two years of that group grant application that held the power spending money. Anyway, so, you know, manage it. And then I don't have comments clarification on press relations that I went through last then sometimes the second quarter is not like open make as they were reporting on what was that stated during no longer school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Peltier. Council Madora?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As far as the ARPA funds, I have a tendency to agree with Council Peltier as far as the tractor is concerned. Think it's be a good investment, a long-term investment for the town. I do though think that if we can go ahead and start applying and apply for help with getting our sidewalks taken care of and not have it fall onto taxpayer, try to get some some mileage out of our sidewalks, to say, I think that would be a good investment, a, a good opportunity. Maybe as the manager stated, we wouldn't get the whole 5,000, 500,000, maybe it would be a smaller version of it. But at least it would be seed money that would allow us to then go ahead and improve the quality of transportation and walkability in the town, which is something the town has been striving for. Or at least has been brought up on several occasions. As far as the grant options concerned for micro grants, as Counselor Peltier again stated, and we've attempted this on more than one occasion. We tried a revolving loan fund, we tried care grants, we've tried different things. We've tried different things and it's always been an accounting nightmare to make sure that those funds that have been put out there have been used appropriately, or there's been some fruit that has for the investment. So I have a tendency to not be overly supportive of that. I would like to go ahead and as far as the main development foundation, is that committee when it comes back up, this manager, is that going to be again headed by Robert O'Brien? You know?
For Maine. That committee is staffed by Robert O'Brien. It is, it is led by a man named Charlie Spies. However, I believe he'll be stepping down soon. So I'm not sure who the leader of that group will be in the near future.
Certainly that. Go ahead, sir.
I'm sorry, I was just going to confirm again that, yes, Robert O'Brien is the staff for the four main project and, and that committee as well.
It has been, I have the opportunity to work with O'Brien on several occasions. And he has been first and foremost, a big advocate for our area and has been a real help. So I'm glad to see that the committee is going to stay going forward and we're going to still have the opportunity to take advantage of it. As far as the survey is concerned, I, I think it's pretty well put out there. I, I, I think it's very reasonable. I think the questions are very to the point, and I look forward to getting the responses on the survey to see what is, you know, the date of the people that would show up at the poll to answer. Other than that, Mr. Manager, thank you once again for making connections, networking, doing the things necessary to go ahead and connect Millenocket to the rest of the state of Maine and vice versa. So thank you for that. And with that, I'll say thank you, Chairman.
Well said. Thank you, Counselor Mador. Any other, Counselor McEwen?
I just want to hear from the airport director if possible. What other cost savings will this tractor perform in? Than what's currently been used?
Chuck Campbell Airport Manager, the biggest savings will be in personnel, the timing and personnel, each, each pass is a mile down the side of that runway. Takes about thirty seven passes on the side of the runway from the equipment that we were using. It's a six foot mall. This is a twelve foot mall. So it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna really reduce the time that somebody has to spend out there. Plus, if we get the piece of equipment for the airport, the airport will be responsible for doing the phone. That will take a couple of workers. So we wouldn't pay a public works employee and just put them to go on.
Just want a little bit more information on that, but I think any, no, I, I, no, thank you.
Oh, okay. You also.
Yeah, I just, I wanted some more. No, no worries. Thank you for that. And just a thoughtful investment. I know there's plenty of needs in one, but certainly something I'd be in favor for. You have one more thing you said, sure.
That equipment isn't just promoting, I mean, that can be a multiple use, that's a bucket on it. Aircraft, that can be used for multiple things. So with this investment, not only will it help us with moving.
Thank you. And the only other point I really wanted to highlight is getting some of our information up to date. Thank you. The integration that we have with Design Lab and that ability to use those tools appropriately, it's something we should have been doing. And I think a part of that just takes who's going to be able to actually plug in and understand some of those, really some simple needs, but does need some review. And just thank you for getting the calendar up and going. That functionality used to exist, but wasn't really utilized. Since both sense of create to see that and if there's just a good fine tooth comb going through with informational elements. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McEwen. Any other, Counselor Danforth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm looking at the options that are provided for, you know, to try to make a decision around the county ARPA funding, and I'm really, really struggling. I'm only going to say this because I've been working on other grant applications, one for the hospitals and then a couple of other nonprofits. And I'm trying to see how or figure out how these fit in the intended use of the ARPA fund. So really need to go back to look at the survey that you created and you have those four different broad categories, replace public sector revenues and support COVID nineteen and so on and so forth. So I really need to think about this a little bit more. Which one of these options that you presented actually fit into the category? It is county, it is, you know, coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund that they're we're applying from the South County. And so we need to make sure yeah, our ask is appropriate, I guess is that's where I'm going. So I'm still trying to process things through this with my grant writer hat on, and I'm not quite sure. I don't know that you necessarily want to go after like twenty five or the fifty thousand just because you think it's easier, it's less money. The county has twenty nine point five million dollars to allocate. Bangor alone is getting twenty million. They have their own funding. So there's a lot of money, I think, to go around or to be allocated. I think we need to be really thoughtful about our ask. And I'm just, I'm not there yet with what I would recommend from my perspective. So I need to think about this a little bit more. Having said that, the application is due next Wednesday. And so there's some writing to do, there's some it's not that terrible of an application as others have. They've really tried to make it easy. So I'm not saying it's not doable. But we have to act quickly. We have to make a decision. And I'm not sure. Yeah, I don't have my recommendation to share at this time.
Thank you, Counselor Danforth. Counselor Bray?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm going to follow up right off on what Counselor Danforth had just talked about because one of the things we had also discussed was working a regional service officer, if you would, in reference to assisting, is there additional information you might have on that?
Mr. Bray, are you talking about like the social worker to work alongside East Millenocket Police Department? That is Karas and Kyle Leather's, what, East Millenocket is working on that application. And I and Brittany Gruder has been working on that with him to get that in. So they are applying for that for funding for that purpose.
And I mentioned that because I think that with the problems that we have in the region, and since we're kind of being served in a regional law enforcement would be advantageous, excuse me, to prioritize that. I am a little bit concerned in reference to the reality. We mentioned that there's three hundred and fifty billion dollars, but we don't mention that what the town share is. Two hundred and forty some thousand, two hundred and twenty four, one hundred and forty two thousand. I always get those numbers mixed up. But it's in that vicinity. It's less than a quarter of a million dollars for us over a two-year period. And it makes a difference when you're looking at. And I know one previously question is in reference to the county's ARPA funds. There are sixty one communities, plantations, and not counting the unorganized territories in South County to divide that money among. And, and obviously we have three county commissioners who probably are somewhat favored towards their own particular districts, wanting to make sure that they get some type of equal share. And of course, we get a lot of services out of Bangor, so I would suspect that that one particular district, Commissioner Valdaki's district would have a lot more requests, but that services multiple areas. So trying to separate the county ARPA funds and looking at our, us doing this, we should give them a realistic number to how we spend our fund. For example, fixing roads, what's the cost estimate is there of how we're going to divide that two hundred and forty thousand, I'll use that number. How do we use that two hundred and forty or share that for school improvements who also got more money than we did in federal funds in the last couple of years due to that playground improvements, I think is important, but you don't put a number out there. I think it's hard for somebody to say, oh, that's something I think I would support versus other things that we lift here. And I think, and I do appreciate the fact that the primary is coming up, and I mentioned this at our last meeting. I hope everybody turns out and votes in a primary. I suspect a heavy turnout on the Republican side because they have a primary. The Democrats don't have anybody in a primary on their ballot. But that still would give you a candid view of what the general feedback of the public is. So it's more just in going out to this primary election and trying to get a feedback, how people think we should spend these monies. So it's an, and I understand it's an ongoing process of getting greater input from the community. Goes to the manager's report in reference to opening up lines of communications and giving the citizens of this town a greater opportunity to have an input. I enjoy going to the local grocery store. Usually I'm going to grab one or two items, but it usually takes me an hour to get in and out. By the time I get done talking to two or three people or sometimes just on the street walking my dog, car will pull up and stop and say, hey, what, tell me about this, that's, that's going on in the town. Need, and I, I do appreciate what the manager and the people that are helping him getting a greater communication network up where we can have greater communication with the citizens, but I'm putting this on the citizen. Dissipate in these things. You need to use what the town is putting out for you to give feedback to us. Feedback to the school board, feedback to the council, feedback to the manager and everybody else. Instead of waiting until afterwards and said, what the hell did you guys go and do that for? Let us know beforehand, please. And to the, to the report itself and I think it's a good report. I appreciate the fact that it's a little shorter than normal. I did have one item that I wrote in note down in reference to, which I can't find now, so I guess I'll let, let that be. I do want to make reference. So one of the things on there is the last question on there in reference to what a lot of communities have done, have given premium pay out of the ARPA funds for what government employees, municipal employees, firefighters, obviously police departments and, and ambulance services and even the town clerk's office that stayed open through the whole thing and dealt with people who were dealing also with difficult times and some believing, not believing in the COVID situation, making it difficult because they're the ones that receive a lot of the complaints. Ambulance crew, firefighters going into homes, not knowing if people are, have been vaccinated or not vaccinated or what those situations, responding to those emergencies. I do think they deserve some type of consideration on that. And I hope the townspeople would recognize it. I know they continue to hold their jobs and they work and they get the paycheck, but they also stepped up and served the community during the pandemic. And that goes to the school system as well. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Bray. Any other counsel comment? Counselor Danforth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I've been sitting here thinking a little bit, a little bit about perhaps appropriate use of the funds, I'm reminded that we remember whether it was early in this year or the end of last year, we had concerns brought forth forward to us about air quality. So in thinking about that and thinking about the COVID funds where you really want to, you know, reduce the spread of airborne disease, is there something that we can do within our infrastructure here in the building or the fire station to upgrade, improve our air flows? This is, I don't know how to talk about it, but those are things that we could look at to apply for funding for in our buildings, perhaps. Something that would reduce the spread of disease because it really is related to COVID and all things COVID. And maybe, you know, Tom Malcolm has some ideas related to EMS, some need. So if you think of it sort of through that lens, maybe we have a project to put an application in that would.
Very nice conclusion. Mr. Manager, you have your hand up?
I did. I feel like I might have missed the last bit of what Counselor Danforth was saying. However, I wanted to make mention that just yesterday I spent a chunk of time with two technicians from Honeywell who were servicing our heat and AC systems within the building. Kind of, you know, putting yet another outdated Band-Aid on the outdated system that we have. We talked about options for what a realistic upgrade to the building would be in terms of, you know, being able to control the air quality, you know, be significantly more efficient economically. And, and, you know, just overall have better control of the system. That is also an appropriate use of the funds that other communities have taken advantage of with their local funds. It's something that we could apply for in the county funds. It would be I mean, the, the ballpark number that was thrown out yesterday was in the vicinity of thirty thousand dollars. I have a feeling it could be more. If you're interested, I can certainly get more information on that. I think it would be a very would be a very good investment for our building. So I'm, I'm happy to get a more structured kind of quote on what that would look like for an application.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any other counsel comments on the manager's board? Counselor Bragdon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Start off, I agree with Counselor Bray. I appreciate this short one after the long one we had last time. I have no problem with applying for the farm tractor. It's multi-use equipment due for multiple things. I think it's a great addition to the airport. Will save a ton of time by the sounds of it. I love the very short ARPA funds questionnaire. I think it's great. I think it's great that we're expanding our community involvement with insisting contact. I think it's fantastic, you know, voice drive. We have strived as council since they want to increase our communication with the public. I think it's great. So thank you, Mr. Manager and Amber for everything you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bragdon. Counselor Pelletier?
Yes, question regarding, of course, support for sidewalk application. You mentioned getting the seed money. I mean, maybe the C I D staffers verify all these. Seems that unsecured from the federal pets.
Thank you, Counselor Pelletier. Counselor Mador?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify, when I said seed money, basically we've got a tremendous amount of sidewalks that are in disrepair, that a lot of them are unwalkable. What I meant by seed money is the fact that we cannot go ahead and afford as municipality vote and do all of them at once or even a great chunk of them at one time without trying to get some financial, yeah. So what I'm referring to with seed money was this would be an opportunity to, to build on a situation of possibly, I would dare say upwards of, in Millenocket, I would say probably we have upwards of about anywhere from three quarter of a million to a million dollars worth of sidewalks that really need to be done, repaired or otherwise. This five hundred thousand dollars would be a good seed to go ahead and get a great chunk of that done to better offer the opportunity for walkability within our community. I also would like to know if ARPA funds are available for longer lasting batteries for the microphone of the council because obviously that is something that is desperately needed. And with that, I'll say thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Mador. Some batteries run out faster than others. Counselor Bragdon, just to wrap up, counsel comment?
A side note, a lot of batteries, please don't ask for anymore.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, I just want to say thank you for putting together this. Mr. Manager, I just want to say thank you for putting together this survey and for the ARPA funds. And I, I would very much hope that the public can recognize and appreciate the the extraordinary amount of energy and time that we have taken to ensure that all the public voices have been heard in terms of how we should use these ARPA funds. We are roughly a year, if not more, past the time that we have been initially awarded these ARPA funds. And we've held multiple public meetings, regular town council meetings where we've discussed this issue. And we still felt that not enough people in the public have been reached. And so we've decided with a lot of input and help from our manager that we need to do more. And we need to have this survey put out to those who are voting in the primaries. As another way of trying to gauge the public interest in how we should use these funds. I just hope that the public appreciates that and that that could also set an example for other boards on how they should go about engaging with the public and ensuring that the public is heard in all decisions, especially with such large amounts of money. So just thank you to our manager, to the other counselors, all the counselors on this council who recognize the importance of engaging with the public and ensuring that we're doing right by them. On the ARPA funds, Counselor Danforth obviously mentioned the deadline is next Wednesday. So that's a very short timeframe. Can only one request be submitted? That's a yes from Counselor Danforth. And in terms of timeline, how quickly do we receive those funds if we are awarded? Does anyone know? Counselor Danforth, do you have an idea?
Yeah, I believe it is in the fall. I think it's like September, August, September. And then it could be a three-year program. So it's like the other ARPA funds, they need to be extended by December 2026.
Thank you, Counselor Danforth. If that's the case, and the issue of an already understaffed public works department has to spend three weeks at a time mowing the airport, which I'm assuming is more than once a year. If we wait until fall for potentially receiving these funds, I would just hope that that's understood by the council. We may not really want to apply for something like that with the ARPA funds. Mr. Manager, did you have perhaps a plan to address this in the budget as an option when we look at our budget?
We we don't have it built into the budget at this point. No. We have Jeff, our airport manager, is doing some research with some local outfits who may be able to handle this work in a contracted service capacity for this summer. If we are to continue seeking out grant funding for, you know, a tractor for that location. I'll just note that regardless of the outcome of what we apply to this ARPA funds for, we will continue to seek grant funding for these sorts of things and specifically for this tractor. We, so long-winded answer for no, not criminal.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Does anyone object from the council of just seeing what that option might look like if we build it into our capital plan or build it into the airport budget? Is there any opposition to see what that would look like on the overall budget? There's no opposition, Mr. Manager? Counselor Mador?
There is opposition. I just, again, I, I we keep building things into the budget, going to end up a budget that is going to be just inflated on the back of taxpayers. I, I look for things like this, opportunities like this to help the community get some situations taken care of and not do it on the back of taxpayers, on the backs of our citizens when other communities, I, I just don't understand what is about projects that keep being brought up as far as the ARPA funds are concerned that could be a benefit to the town of Millinocket as a whole. And, and definitely go ahead and help out with either, I mean, obviously we had one that was proposed for the infrastructure, for the, the Iron Bridge Road, Bridge in Culver that was, that was voted down. And now we have something that for, so of equipment that can be used for years and years to come within our, our airport and public works department that obviously is needing assistance. I just don't get it that these things are being put into, said, well, we just add it to the budget. Just add it to the back of the taxpayers. Just add it to this and that. I, it doesn't make sense to me that these monies are available to be used. Why aren't we using them? Other communities certainly are taking advantage of these funds to help their communities out in infrastructure, in equipment, in various ways that are not necessarily equated to mental health or counseling or whatever. And they are doing it, able to help their citizenry without having to go ahead and raise their taxes or to put a burden on their budget. And I get why we are having a hard time with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mador. Mr. Manager, given that the majority of the council would be interested in seeing at least the option on the budget, if you could perhaps add it to what it would look like with the capital plan or, and/or in the airport budget line. That would be appreciated. Obviously, that does not have to be accepted by the council if we see that it does not fit the needs of the town, but just to see how that impact would be would be appreciated. Thank you. Also, thank you on the Design Lab website updates. It's obviously important that we keep that up to date and informative for the public, especially for the calendar. I know that we've talked about that a lot in the Economic Development Committee recently. For those of you in the public who haven't seen those meetings, they are all on YouTube. Feel free to look at our last one where we did discuss that website and potential updates there as well. And with that, are there any comments from the public on the management report, Mr. Jackson? Or Sandra, either one?
Randy Jackson 106 Knock Street. Maybe someone can tell me the difference between fixing roads and road repairs?
Ralph, I think you're the only one in the room that would ever be comfortable answering that question.
Road repairs would be like a spark repair. Not a complete. Thank you, guys. Excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Sandra?
Sandra Sullivan, one of us on that drive. I just wanted to thank the manager for his statement regarding the school. Like I said, I wasn't, but it had no reason, question for being said until the press information came out. So thank you, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Sandra. And Counselor Jackson had an epiphany?
Randy Jackson, I recall. So the sidewalk maintenance, perhaps you don't remember, but Ralph gave us a very good and informative report of fixing the sidewalks in Millinocket at a council meeting and displayed to us the plan to do so over a, like a five-year period or six-year period, using the resources that the town has every year to do so. Is that correct, Ralph? That's correct. So I, I bring this to your attention because, you know, sidewalk maintenance, we already have a plan for that. So why don't we use it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Malcolm?
Hello, Malcolm. I'm a health officer and I just want to thank the manager and Amber for reaching out and looking at this, you know, I've been crying about this for over a year. Your staff, we need to take care of our staff. I know I've told you all this, but I wanted to get this out so the public knows they're going to get a chance to talk about this. You know, during this whole COVID disaster, or whatever you want to call it, I've got a lot of different names. Our crews went above down personnel. What was I giving them? I forced them to work. We need to eat them alive. That's what a lot of this money was mine for. Looked around, you had your own community, give. People in this community working on it both. So I just urge citizens to, when you look at that report, you know, it says, and I'm not just talking for any MS, I'm talking for any of that, those who do. I need to work on my people, keeping them healthy and safe and happy. But overall, whole town, you didn't miss a beat here. You did everything that was required and, and above. So I just urge you to. So thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief Malcolm.
Airport manager, just to expand on what Chief Malcolm said, that is across the board. Public works was on the line all the time and even your airport manager. The federal airspace system was required to be open and federally obligated to staff that airport so that flying in from away or light flight or any of that stuff, there was somebody that had a flight right in place inside. And people were flying from the congested areas to get, try to escape some of what was going on in the city. So it happened in a roster that probably should have.
Thank you, Mr. Capel. Susan DelaSandro?
Hi, Susan DelaSandro, State Street, Millinocket. I wanted to thank you very much for the survey regarding the ARPA funds. It's very much appreciated by a lot of people. And I'm thankful to hear Counselor Danforth's comments. For one thing, I've been very hoping that the idea of the social worker working alongside the police would actually be submitted. And also that, in my mind, I'm, I'm a little curious that I don't know if the CDS funding has gone by or there'll be any more for that. But the, the federal infrastructure funds have still not been dispersed. And in my mind, I feel like the ARPA funds are, you know, should be health-related in some way. Not to say that there aren't, the needs are many, you know, and I realize that, but it's so seldom that there's funding ever available for health-related issues. And whether it's what Mr. Malcolm just spoke about, or lots of other ways, the social worker, lots of different ways. So all of, a lot of that can hopefully come out in the survey that you're putting out. And I, I certainly very much agree with what Chairman Golub said because people really do appreciate the openness, the transparency, hearing about the, the constant contact option. And just all the efforts. I mean, it's, it's just fantastic. And I too wish that that applied to all the boards and hopefully maybe that will get there. But it, it's very, very much appreciated as far as the accessibility and transparency that the council has bent over backwards to do. And I do hope that other boards will follow your lead. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Susan. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Susan sparked a epiphany within me, you know, much like Mr. Jackson's epiphany. She mentioned the CDS funding. What I had failed to mention that I believe is worth mentioning is that both of the applications that we submitted recently to the congressionally directed spending program have been pushed through to the next level. So that is a very encouraging sign. To my knowledge, all of the applications that got pushed through that round in, you know, in, in last year's cycle were funded. So the two applications that we applied for were the construction of the new airport terminal that we are having designed through the NBRC funding. And then we also applied for reconstruction of the sidewalks and lighting infrastructure for the stretch of downtown Millinocket. So if we continue on the path that we're on with this program, we could see some very rewarding results, you know, a year from now. So just wanted to share that to, to wrap up this report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Obviously, great news. Any other comments from the public? Diana?
As the other department head here, I need to speak for my department. And just a reminder of how it was very difficult to work with the doors closed. I did actually open windows most of the time to do transactions from the sidewalk, personal cell phones, phone calls. So we did work through a very tough time together and we did get through it. And we were also down staffing. So, but with you guys, it was also a great assistance. So it's one of the public to remember that the doors were closed, but we were still there for them.
Thank you, Diana. And I'm sure it's felt by all of us on the council that we all greatly appreciate the work that all the staff do for the town and the great work that you do for the residents of the town as well. But just a thank you from us very much. Any other public comments on the manager's report? And seeing none? That will bring us into new business. And Counselor McKeown, if I could have a read order number 122, 2022, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Order number 122 dash 2022, providing for execution of the town warrant for June 9, 2022. It is ordered that the town warrant for June 9, 2022 in the amount of $117,182.30 hereby approved.
Motion by Counselor Mador, or motion by Counselor McKeown, second by Counselor Mador. Discussion of the council, heavy hitters?
Thirty-five thousand eight forty-one from a cent aviation group. Three thousand six hundred sixteen dollars seventy-eight cents, Dead River. Port Tanner Associates, two thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars three cents. Five thousand two hundred two dollars seventy cents, Municipal Review Committee. Two thousand seventy-two dollars thirty-four cents, Public Oil Company. And thirty-one thousand three hundred fifteen dollars ninety-seven cents to strike reflects finance on the way to the power power cost on the monitors. Thank you. Sixteen thousand five eighty-sixty-one, TY Lynn International. And that is it.
Thank you, Counselor McKeown. Any other counsel comment? Seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none back to the council, all in favor? That's a seven zero from Counselor McKeown. If I could have a read order number 1232022, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Order 123 dash 2022, providing for execution of the wastewater warrant for June 9, 2022. It is ordered that the wastewater warrant for June 9, 2022 in the amount of $8,165.18 hereby approved.
Thank you. Motion by Counselor McKeown, second by Counselor Mador. Have you hitters on that?
One, five thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars fifty cents, pure to Atwood.
Thank you, Counselor McKeown. Any other comment from the council? Seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none back to the council. Also seeing none back to the council, all in favor. That's seven zero. Council Braden, if I could have your, or belt here, excuse me, can I have your read order number one twenty-four, twenty twenty-two, please?
Certainly. Order number one twenty-four dash twenty twenty, providing for approval of an application for a payment license. Gather in. There's orders that we attach application for anything licensed. For Mark Dorval, Melanie Curtis, one forty-six, Kilogram Road, South Portland, Maine.
Motion by Council Paul Tier, second by Council Braden, discussion of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to say welcome to the community. I've seen right now that you've been on watching the whole council meeting. I, I'm glad to see. The enthusiasm you seem to have for the business itself. And forward to meeting you in person and having you to visit here in town in Millinocket. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Madore. Any other council comments? I think the same goes for all of us. Thank you very much for your interest in our town, and we'll go to the public for comment if you had anything you would like to say.
We are very excited to be a part of Millinocket, so. Were we really loud?
For a short second there, yes. No, you're fine. It's our, it's our technology. We go ahead.
We're very excited to be a part of the community. We love Millinocket and we can't wait to meet all of you in person and see what we can do with the inn.
Yeah, I second that. I think that we have a big vision that we want to bring, you know, to the inn moving forward and. Keep working on the work that Erica and Dustin, you know, have put their heart and soul into that inn. And and we want to continue that and continue to build and be a part of such an amazing community.
Well, thank you. You are very welcome here and very much appreciate your interest. And always reach out to us if you have any questions or seek any assistance. Mr. Manager.
Just wanted to offer an invite to, you know, stop down to the town office, come, come see me, come meet the staff. We, I'd love to sit and chat with you about the town, about, you know, what we want to see in the future and. See some, you know, whatever type of friendship and collaboration we can, we can get. I'd love to meet you and I'd love to chat and congratulations on your new business.
Thank you. We'll, we'll be in Millinocket on the sixteenth, which is next Thursday through the weekend. So we would love to meet as many of you as we can, and we'll be around town, we'll be at the inn, and we look forward to it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Yes, Erica.
Hi, obviously, I wanted to be one of. Erica Mackin, one eighty-nine Lincoln Street. Hi, guys. Um, I just wanted to be one of the first to say congratulations, and I'm so, so happy for you guys and looking forward to. Working with you in the transition of your business and it's wonderful, and these people really mean it when they figure here for you. So thank you and good luck.
Thank you, Erica. Any other public comments? And seeing none back to the council, all in favor. Passes seven zero. Council Braden, if I could have a read order number one twenty-five, twenty twenty-two, please.
Order number one twenty-five dash twenty twenty-two, providing for approval of an application for a vicular license for the gather in. It is ordered that the attached application for a vicular license is hereby approved for Mark Davelle and Melanie Curtis. One forty-six Kilogram Road, South Portland, Maine, doing business as Gather In, one ninety-three cents.
Motion by Council Braden, second by Council Madore, discussion of the council. And seeing none out of the public. Also seeing none back, oh, Diana, sorry. See you there.
The reason why this was submitted. With. Not hesitation, but he is pending a, a safety. Inspection and wasn't sure if you actually had that set, and if you just wanted feedback going forward. So I wanted him to have the opportunity to speak on that.
Do you have any comment?
Yeah, yes. So I have spoken with Karen Jacobs from the state. The state has received my application. Karen Jacobs is the inspector for that area, and she is confident that we can. Get that inspection done prior to the closing, which is basically just a change of ownership inspection. And I've been working and keeping in contact with her closely, so they do have the application, it's just. Until it gets to her desk and setting it up, but she's confident that we can get it done prior to the closing, get that taken care of.
Thank you for that insight. Any other public comment on that?
When you get that, make sure that you contact us. We have to do an inspection too. And us is, is myself and code. Look, man, and it, it works better if you already have your help light. We can then, because if she's already been through them, we, we, a lot of things are already set. We just have to check your. Your fire and life saving. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. You'll be the first people notified once you get that.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none back to council, all in favor. That's a seven zero. Council Madore, if I could have a read order number one twenty-six, twenty twenty-two, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order one twenty-six dash twenty twenty-two, providing for the approval for an application for a visceral license for Roots the Remedies LLC. It was the attached application for visceral license, is hereby approved for Angela McNamara, fourteen seventeen Elm Street. And I believe it's Orville Township, Maine, doing businesses as Roots the Remedy LLC, ninety-eight Penobscot Avenue, Millinock.
Motion by Council Madore, second by Council Braden, discussion of the council. Council Danforth.
I'm just noticing that taxes are current, but wastewater isn't quite all current, and I'm just wondering what we've done in the past in these cases.
Diana, did you have any insight?
Yes, if it's not completely delinquent, pass a certain period of time, they have been notified. They do intend to pay, and they were actually in paying, and they, they've just been paid in full at that time recently.
Thank you, Diana. Any other council comments? Seeing none out of the public. Also seeing none back to the council, all in favor. Passes seven zero. Council Danforth, if I could have a read order number one twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two, please.
Yes, order number one twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-two, providing for approval of an application for a visual license for McDonald's. Is a, it is ordered that the attached application for a visual license is hereby approved for RC Management LLC, Ron Licklick. Falmouth, Maine, doing business as McDonald's of Millinocket, one Sycamore Street, Millinocket.
Motion by Council Danforth, second by Council Madore, discussion of the council. Seeing none out of the public. Also seeing none back to the council, all in favor. Passes seven zero. Council Prey, if I could have a read order number one twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two, please.
Order number one twenty-eight dash twenty twenty-two, providing for approval for upgrade compactor building lights and lighting. Orders that the Millinocket Town Council approved five thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents to upgrade the transfer compactor building lighting. This expenditure is eligible for an efficiency main rebate of at least two thousand dollars, which will be charged to R. One, three, zero, zero, dash, five, five, zero, four, capital improvement slash efficiency main energy rebate. It is further ordered that the project cost of five thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents is charged to E. One, three, zero, zero, dash, nine, five, zero, two, capital improvement slash capital reserve. Note, the capital reserve count, E, one, three, zero, zero, dash, nine, five, zero, two, has an unspent balance of five thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars. However, the net project, project expenditure will be no greater than three thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Once the main energy rebate is deducted.
Motion by Council Prey, second by Council McKeown, discussion of the council.
Mr. Chairman.
Council Madore.
Yeah, I'm glad that this is coming forward. As you've noted in previous council meetings, I talked about this. Having gone up and observed lighting and compact buildings, it's less than perfect. With an understatement, I think so is a lot of safety as well as efficiency and protection of staffs there. So I would encourage the council, especially with the rebate, to support this going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Madore. Other discussion from the council? Seeing none out of the public. Also seeing none back to the council, all in favor. Passes seven zero. Counselor Belt here, if I could have a read order number one twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two, please.
Order number one twenty-nine, dash, nine, five, providing for approval, you see all the reports financially year twenty-two budget. Whereas their change audit confirms that's created void schedule change, which has created a one thousand, one hundred dollar budget for a call other reported. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council transfer of one thousand dollars from the US. To the E zero, one, nine, dash, four, zero, zero, one, order, but we're relying on the payment schedule.
Motion by Council Paul Tier, second by Council Braden, discussion of the council. Seeing none out of the public. Also seeing none back to the council, all in favor. That's a seven zero. Council Braden, if I could have a read order number one thirty, twenty twenty-two, please.
Order number one thirty dash twenty twenty-two, providing for approval to increase assigned fund balance for revaluation. Whereas the current amount in the N S I, in the assigned fund balance is thirty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-four cents from the minutes for. Revaluation, and whereas the account R zero, one, zero, one, dash, zero, nine, zero, zero. General Government Statement of School Revenue Sharing is five hundred and eighty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars favorable to the fiscal year twenty-two budget. It is ordered that the seventy-five thousand is transferred from R zero, one, to, R zero, one, zero, one, dash, zero, nine, zero, zero. General Government Statement for Revenue Sharing to increase the minutes for revaluation reserved to one hundred nine thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion by Council Braden, second by Council Madore, discussion of the council. Seeing none out of the public. Also seeing none back to the council, all in favor. Passes seven zero. Council Madore, if I could have a read order number one thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, please.
Order one thirty-one dash twenty twenty-two, providing for authorization for town manager to sign lease agreement. It is ordered that the Millinocket Town Council authorize the town manager to sign a lease agreement between the town and Millinocket. Steven Noise doing business of Noise Enterprises, ninety-two Hanover Street, Newbury, Mass. Attached to this order is a copy of the lease.
Motion by Council Madore, second by Council Danforth, thank you. Discussion of the council, Council Prey. You have turned off your microphone.
Thank you, Chairman. I was going to ask Council Madore to read the agreement, but I. Hold of that at the moment. I do have a couple of questions over. In reference to, um, on. The first, therefore, now therefore, in the second bit, on page one, technically listed. Paragraph two says subleases, the leases shall not sublease any part of the hanger. But then on page four, item fourteen, use of space. The third sentence in, face the lease statement, they also rent aircraft storage space as an allowable aviation-related use. It then goes on the next paragraph, because in the sentence right there, any other proposed aviation under this agreement must be pre-approved by the lease sir. I would think that would be a common or a, the end would be eliminated, requiring him also to get approval of the airport manager. Or the town as the leaser for that. It may be a common language that you could have, but I think it's kind of an open-ended broad sentence. To say that he may also rent aircraft storage space.
Mr. Capel, feel free to.
My concern.
I don't believe it's a contradiction. These documents were written up by our town attorney, by, by previous management. We haven't run into any conflict. His particular lease even says that he can work on boats and outboards. It hasn't been an issue. If he wants to leave space for aircraft storage, then welcome to do so. Everything that's been done, it's been.
Because I also noticed on page five, on item nineteen, signability, the lease there shall not assign this agreement or any other. Or any part thereof in any event, and shall not rent or sublease. Or the services required in this agreement. It just seems to be contradictory that we say twice that he can't do it, and then we. Here we allow him to, to rent.
To do it with permission. With permission. He is only allowed to do it with permission. He's not allowed to do it without permission. The way I see it. Any sublease to anything that's outside the contract, he has to ask permission.
Well, that's, it, it, the sentence, the previous sentence, the leaser agrees to allow the leasier the right to repair, as you stated. Variety of equipment, both motors and so forth. And then the next sentence says the leaser may also rent aircraft storage space. As an allowable aviation-related use. It's a sentence, but now we're giving him permission in that sentence alone to do it. But I'm just asking if it contradicts it. I, I think, I think it does, but I understand you're saying. Done by the attorney, and we know lawyers never make mistakes.
Council Prey, at least from my perspective, I know that for restaurants and other businesses. They may have the lease to a building, but they may lease, for example, a sign or advertising space. That's not necessarily equivalent to the overall lease of that entire building. In my view, this is. Renting a portion of that space within the overall lease. It's not subleasing the lease. It's essentially affording some space within their existing lease. Did I get that correctly, Jeff? Thank you. Council Palteer.
Also, first. Sublease, lease shall not sublease any part of the hanger to the other party without permission, bless them. So that allowed.
Then I don't know why we wouldn't add on item fourteen. The use of space that just adds the word with the approval of the lease roll. Except for here.
Council Madore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This lease has been brown since Mr. Nois basically. Yeah, and it has never been anything that has been a, a, a problem or any question for. Dealing with. It's both parties have dealt with this lease in good faith. It's worked very well so far, and. Why there, there may be able to be a little bit of a language deviation part. The document has worked very well, and it's worked very well for both parties, and I don't see any to, to change or amend it. To move forward. I just am glad that Mr. Nois is going to go ahead and want to keep the lease agreement with the airport, and I appreciate the revenue. Thank you, Chairman. And if I may add, he also has satisfied the leaseholder improvement agreement, meaning he has paid. As we now own the sole improvement on that building, twenty-eight by sixty edition of heated workshop. That he funded in his own money. Now we have given him half the money back as a, an adjustment on the lease. And now that has been satisfied. He's going to go to the full price of the lease, which is an extra twelve hundred dollars a year, revenue for us. And we now have ownership of it.
Thank you, Jeff. And for those in the public who don't know what actually goes on there, I know that one of the things is they build aircraft. One of which is for the Canadian government. Could you speak to a little bit more about what goes on there, Jeff?
Yeah, he, he specializes, specializes in a particular type of military aircraft. It was built by Cessna in the fifties for the Korean War, and it's still highly sought after and highly used. For glider towing, banner towing, warbird restoration, people that like, like. Guat memorabilia or that type of aircraft, and he has a contract with the Canadian military to repurpose the aircraft that are still in their inventory. That tow gliders in their, that, well. So gliders are off, and they some cadets learn to fly the glider, and then they learn to become co-pilots, and they move on. So gliders are off, and there'll be some cadets learned to fly the glider, and then they learned to become co-pilots, and they move on.
And that's one of the many things that go on at the airport. Thank you, Jeff, for giving us that information. Any other comment from the council? Seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none back to the council all in favor. Passes seven. Where's your hand up on that one, really? Seven zero. Thank you. Councilor McKeon, could I have your read order number one thirty-two twenty-two, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, order number one thirty-two dash twenty-two, providing for pause funding for E S S E R three grant expenditures. Whereas order number twenty-nine dash twenty-two approved transferring one million five hundred thousand dollars from the unassigned fund balance provided additional path load for for the F Y twenty-two school special dedicated revenue clearing account budgets. And whereas this budget included E S S E R three grant expenditures of one million seven hundred forty, one million seven hundred forty thousand eight hundred eighty-two dollars fifty cents. And whereas three hundred thirty-one thousand six hundred thirty-four dollars eight cents has been spent and no reimbursement received as of the five thirty-one twenty-two reporting. It is ordered that funding for the E S S E R three grant expenditures is put on hold pending further review, and that the treasurer does not have the authority to sign any invoices for such expenditures after this date without further sample approval.
Second. Motion by Councilor McKeon, second by Councilor Bragg. A discussion of the council. Councilor McKeon? No, sorry, you're touching your head. All right. Seeing none out of the public. Mr. Manager.
I just wanted to note that in preparation for this meeting before the before the adjustment to the agenda was sent out, I did have communication with the superintendent and the school's business manager requesting the information on what may be in the works already and what may be ordered or arranged already that may be impacted by this decision this evening. So they, they were aware of the communication. I have not seen a response at this time, and as we know, Mr. McNaughton is not in attendance this evening. However, I wanted to make it known that that we did reach out to try to understand what would be impacted in in this decision.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any other, any other public comment? Mr. Jackson?
Randy Jackson, one oh six Knox Street. Perhaps others in the audience do not know the acronym E S S E R three, and would you please state that for the public's information? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Randy Jackson. E S S E R is essentially an ARPA fund program, where the school receives funds through the federal program that goes through the state. That gives them an alternative of an ARPA acronym. I don't know what the acronym of E S S E R is. Perhaps someone on here does. Councilor Gray.
One of them is educational. And it did go to the school system.
Yeah, we narrowed that one down.
It's similar to you earlier, not recalling what the second item is. I did know it at one time, but I do know education is in there. But since I have before, if I may, just to clarify any potential confusion from some earlier discussions, that this deals with a cash flow problem. It is not us dropping our interest in continuing it, but we've been funding money for the school system to, to spend this money to do projects, which they're going to get reimbursed at some point by the federal government. And we just need to have a better understanding of the cash flow as to the money that we committed to them. I just want to make sure that kind of clear, because there's been so many misinterpretations of the interest by the council in activities of town departments expending municipal money that we have to raise and the money that we have on hand. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Gray, for that clarification. And Mr. Manager, please enlighten us with what the E S S E R acronym is.
The E S S E R acronym stands for Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief. Thank you.
So we were, we were entirely off. Mr. Manager, thank you for giving us that acronym, but it's essentially another form of ARPA sense that goes for educational purposes. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Manager, I don't know if you're offended.
I was trying to. My, my, my earbuds, my earbuds died. I just wanted to not take all of the credit for that. I consulted with my Google machine for, for that answer, so.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Any other public comment? And seeing none back to the council, Councilor Bragg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank the manager for attempting to keep clear communication with the school. Obviously, we haven't had the clearest communication, but thank you for, for everything you do attempting to to keep full transparency between the two.
Thank you, Councilor Bragg. Councilor Mador.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Even though I know we've had a little bit of lightheartedness here as far as trying to figure out the acronym and everything else, we take this as a council this very seriously, and this action is, as has been stated, is more of a, an accounting and finding a way to get some answers to some serious questions as far as reimbursement and timelines that. So by no stretch of the imagination, even though we do have a little bit of fun up here, this is a very serious thing, and it's a very serious step. We take it very seriously, and I don't want that to be confused in any way, shape, or form that we don't take this action frivolously. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Mador, for that clarification. Councilor Danforth.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just want to also say that the wording says pause funding. It's just, it's not that we're not going to come forward or through with the funding, and I really want to find out like what was in the works for expenditures for the summer and how this impacted. So I'm still very, we're open to hearing, you know, what sort of lined up with this funding. I know there's a timeline for spending, but because there hasn't been any reimbursement yet, it kind of leaves us with a lot of questions to know, perhaps from the state when that funding is coming. So pause is one of the keywords for me here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Danforth. And for just some context for the public, this funding that we had originally assigned from order number twenty-nine twenty-two of one point five million, that unassigned fund balance is basically a buildup of saved funds, like a savings account that the town has from taxpayer money. So the town's taxpayers have been essentially contributing to this account for a very long time in order to build it up to this point. Our goal is to, has been, to cap it at three million dollars. So this one point five is half of that amount. That is why we take it seriously. This is taxpayer money. If we feel that there is any concern whatsoever with such a large amount of money like that, we take it very seriously, as Councilor Mador pointed out. So that's why we're looking at this pause until we have further clarification, and we understand cash flow issues, as Councilor Gray pointed out. But that's just some context for the public to understand kind of what we're looking at as a council. Mr. Manager.
I just wanted to add a little bit of further clarification on what, what you had mentioned there. Chairman, the three million dollar goal for that account, the, the the reasoning for that number is that that is roughly the expenses for three months of time for the municipality to operate and pay their bills. So, you know, for example, between July first and when the when the initial payments for the next round of property taxes and personal property taxes start coming in, you know, we have three months where we will oftentimes need to rely on that unassigned fund balance to cash flow our own operation. You know, minus anything extracurricular. So just so, just a little more clarification on where, what that account is intended to do.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Susan Dela Sandro.
Yes, thank you, Susan Dela Sandro, State Street in Millenock. You know, who's going to turn around and say, oh, you know, we're going to go against the kids. If you go against the school, you go against the kids. No, that's not the case. And you know, this S R three, that means there was S R one and S R two. And I also thought that the state was coming up to the full appropriation like they used to do. I forget the term for it. And then recently, the town was asked for seventy-five thousand dollars for the international program, you know, and yet somehow I feel as a citizen that we're often portrayed as the bad guy when we ask questions or try to understand about this stuff. And yet, like was spoken earlier about sidewalks and things like that, you know, it's the taxpayer. And so, you know, with all this money kind of like floating around and stuff, it's really hard to understand why the town is the bad guy, but yet, you know, where, where do people come when they need money? They come to the town. And it would seem to me that in spite of the fact that the total budget for the school has changed or wants to be changed, and therefore that the superintendent didn't come to the, to this meeting, it would seem to me with an issue like this on the agenda, he certainly could have been here for these kinds of discussions. So for what it's worth, I'm fully in support of this order. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Any other public comment? And seeing none back to the council all in favor. All opposed? Passes six one. And with that, it moves us to report to communications. Warrant committee for the June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two council meeting will be Councilor Gray and myself. Thank you. And any chair committee reports? Councilor Danforth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not the typical chair committee report, but because I haven't had an age-friendly meeting, but we use some of the age-friendly props, let me say. Some of the portable benches that we purchased with a challenge grant, we took down to Crandall Park. So at the end of the extreme canoe race, there would be some extra seating for the participants and community members that came down to cheer on the participants. And I, let me just say it was a great time. It was a great day, huge turnout, and it was really exciting to see the crowd and the people gathering. From all I've heard about the event, it was just a huge success. There's as far as feedback, people want to, this is the first, right? It's going to happen again. People want to come back here. So good use of our portable seating. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Danforth. Any other chair committee report? Councilor Bragg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Add on to Councilor Danforth, I have a friend who actually counted the amount of votes that were there, like ninety-four votes. So it was a great success. For the events committee, I want to say that we have finalized the Fourth of July stuff, and thank you to everybody that attended and call me if you have comments. We will be meeting in, we're going to take a hiatus for a little while, and at the end of July, we're going to be meeting to talk about Halloween and some fall events that we are very excited about. So I encourage everybody to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bragg. And any other chair committee report? The next economic development committee meeting is June twenty-second at ten a.m. It's been posted to the website already. We'll be continuing our discussion on the short-term rentals ordinances that we proposed to the council among attracting new residents and ensuring that our community is an inviting place for businesses and for their ability to attract and retain employees as well as improvements that we can make to the town in terms of bringing snowmobile and ATV traffic. So feel free to join either remotely or at the town manager's office, where it will be held. And with that, that moves us into the two-minute public comment section. If anyone from the public has any comments that they would like to address the council. Mr. Jackson.
Randy Jackson, one oh six Knox Street, Millenock. So in my career as a P A in medicine, I always liked to read what the state legislation is doing to protect its citizens along with medicine. And I think it was in February that I read about the state of Maine passing act to test the water in the, every school system in the state of Maine. So I said, oh, I want to, I'm interested in that. I'd like to see where Millenock stands. And I asked the school for a report. Apparently it was too early, and the school hadn't been tested. And then I waited, it's February, March, April, May, I forget. That I wanted to follow up on that. So I actually looked it up, and it's public information. It's available to everyone. And I asked the school again, and I didn't get any reply. Well, my concern is the numbers in our school system, the middle school and high school are quite elevated, and I'm concerned about that. And I want reassurance that the fountains, if they were, even if they were closed off for two years, I want them checked twenty-four hours. I want an answer to why people have potential access to lead levels of a thousand. A lead level is very important because you drink a little bit, and it stays in your system forever. You drink it for three years, five years, ten years. I don't know when the lead levels were taken at the school, but probably not for a long time, because the state had a partial legislation, and this is years after Detroit. So I'm very concerned about our lead levels. In fact, we in the state of Maine have one of the highest a thousand. Think about that. Zero is acceptable. We have lead levels of two hundred and thirty-four, two hundred and six ninety-eight. Anything above zero is, is quite concerning. So if you've been drinking the school water for ten years or however long you're over there, I think we are obligated to check the lead level on every student in our school. And why we're not? And this information has been out, and it's been published. Why didn't we get this information from the school system when it came out? We have, they, they, they have a map of Maine, and they have the directions about the lead level. Zero is white, and then it gets a little darker, or and green, green, and green is the lowest. And then it turns a little brown and a little brown. And we have a distinction in Millenock of having a rust spot. Yeah, because our lead levels are above fifteen on average. So I bring this to your attention, because this information is readily available. I want to be reassured somehow that the students in our school system over there are safe, and those fountains are safe. I either want them turned off until we can get a satisfactory answer about the lead levels in our school and what we're going to do about it, and what we're going to do for our children. The children in this, in the United States are getting too much lead. Thank you. And I mean that both ways.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. That is an important issue that I myself followed up on. I do know that the school had been given their results a month ago. I followed up with the state, and they gave me that information today. According to state statute, they are required to notify the general public within five days. I have not personally seen any notification from the school in that regard. I know that they plan to address this issue, issue next week. But to your concerns, certainly. But to your concerns, certainly continue to try and get an answer, I would suppose, from the school board. I know that we have the school board chair here, Warren Stewart. Did you have any response to that, Warren? Yeah, he may not be near the computer or whatever he's using for his device. But I would hope that that issue would be addressed soon. I know that I myself am concerned and I know others on the council have been following this as well. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Susan Dela Sandro?
Thank you, Susan Dela Sandro, State Street, Millinocket. I, I'm just so thankful that Randy Jackson spoke. And he has much more clout because he has a medical background. He knows what lead does. And I, I, I'm just beside myself and I too have been following this. I've been asking the school board, I've been asking the superintendent, and I've been doing it since May. And I finally ended up calling the state myself. And I too found out that they have had this information for a month. And you know, I, I just, it's just so hard to be diplomatic about this. I mean, to me, there, there's no excuse for this. Nobody put that lead there on purpose, obviously. But once you know that it's there, it was, by the way, when I spoke to the state woman this morning. She checked and there was no public notification, which as Randy said, is by law supposed to be within five days. And she checked this morning and there was no notification anywhere. And yet this afternoon, it suddenly appeared on the school's website. And there's been some discussion on, I hate to bring it up because the Katana Citizens Group seems to be public enemy number one from time to time. But there are those at the school that don't seem to have the correct information. And just like Peter had mentioned, you know, about don't believe everything you read. Well, yes, on Facebook that happens a lot, but I checked with the state. I have been requesting both verbally and in writing. I've gotten two different answers. This is not okay. And I'm just so glad that this is being discussed tonight because this is horrible. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Susan. Any other public comment? Ralph?
Absolutely. I just wanted to share with everyone, we were able to do the very needed traffic control upgrade today at Central Sycamore and Walsaw. Some of you guys may have seen it already or noticed it, but we're able to put a single camera up there, which looks at the full intersection at one time. So replaces our obsolete wires and the ground system. So it's working really well. Wanted everybody to know that.
That's great news, Ralph. Thank you very much for that update. Yes, please. Come up to the podium, name and address, please.
My name is Alex Hartley. I live in the unorganized territory, so I would have to ask permission to speak.
Sure.
I was a taxpayer. I was, I've lived in Millinocket all my life and I was a taxpayer for thirty-five years, probably longer than all of yous. Thank you. Longer than some of you. I have been to many, many council meetings. I've been to council meetings where they have insisted that the superintendent show how he has tried. To get other communities to come to our school and consolidate. I've seen you where you look to the school to say, what do you have that we can put on our, our website? To promote the school so that people will want to come. I am saddened by what I hear tonight. It's like you're using your seats. In a political manner to get something across. I think there's another way to get it across. I don't, I don't know what that is. Some of the questions that were asked tonight, I will try to get answers. I do work for the school department for another couple of weeks. But I am saddened. I, I am. You, you want us to consolidate? Anybody watching this tonight, would they want to move here? Would, would you? I wonder if the people that are buying the gather is, they have children? Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your comment. I know that our manager is always open to hearing from members of the public, even if you're in the unorganized territory. I would like to say. That no matter how it may be perceived to you in this moment, I'm going to come down here so I can actually see you. We take communication very seriously. And we have put forth a great deal of effort into trying to get response on many of the issues that have come up tonight. And the only reason that, if you want to call it escalation, the only reason that it has escalated to this point is because we just don't have information. And we have to make decisions based upon the taxpayers. And if we're making decisions without having information, then we are not doing our jobs. So although it may be perceived the way that you're, you're seeing it, and I'm sorry that you do. We take making decisions very seriously and we need to make informed decisions. And we have not been given answers despite many, many requests. So I'm sorry that it's come to this as well. But that's the only reason that this last order that just passed six one is on there. And some of these other issues that community members are coming up frustrated about. That's my perspective. I'm not speaking on behalf of the council saying that. But obviously the vote and where we've gotten to this point, I think speaks to that. But I appreciate your comment and please, in, in terms of communication, feel free to reach out to our manager. All the information that you'd like is public information and we will provide anything that you ask for. So long as it's not a legal pending issue that we cannot release. We can't give out personal information. If there's any other information that you would like, we will, we will disclose it to you in a heartbeat. We are an open board and we will continue to operate that way. Thank you for your comment. Any other public comment? And seeing none, I seek a motion to adjourn. Second, motion by Councilor Mador, second by Councilor Bragdon, all those in favor? Pass the seven zero.